So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 22, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Sunny Ford.
I'm here too. I just couldn't get my, I couldn't get the, I couldn't unmute myself, but I'm here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Naomi Mullen. So that'll take us to our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Vail Hoover, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. Vote by voter verification. By that I mean verifying not only that you vote, but for whom. Uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are key to what I do. Universities of Oxford, Pittsburgh, and London. This PC that I'm going to do is almost identical to a PC I did 31 January 2023. A concern of council is the rules of council. Is the 2023 rules of council law? Is the 2023 rules of Pittsburgh City Council not law? I'll take that to be a yes. The U.S. Constitution 1789 does not recognize local council rules to be law. Is Rock 34C3 the golden legal rule on free speech in public comment? Quote, "Members of the public are responsible to deliver their comments in such a manner as to not breach the order and decorum of city council. Breaches of decorum include, but are not limited to, speaking outside of allotted time, shouting, vulgarity," but you don't define it, you don't give any examples of it, and profanity. Is it Ashar? What is Ashar, Ashariah? Profanity? Ashar, Ashariah is Nigerian hausa for profanity. Does Hausa keen Mr. Lavelle here? Ban Zanari Gold Kashi? Where is the Warakuchi profanity? Word list. Warakuchi is Japanese Nihongo for profanity. Does Nihongo kind Ms. Gross bond with Ogon Gold Jidai Kotoba? Who decides what is irreverentia profanity? Irreverentia is Mexican Espanol for profanity. Is Espanol fluent Kell Smith? The F S P C Despota de Oro? And when does applicable law enforcement for envahung profanity come into play? Envahung is German Deutsch for profanity. Does Deutsch von Strasburger say lo, as Hebrew, to the Nuremberg Codex? If Rock 34C3 is law, arrests should follow a breach. If it is not law, council has no foundation for legal enforcement. An officer coming over, leaning over, and offering rapport is not and cannot be enforcement.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Boikowitz.
Hi, my name is Andrea Boikowitz, and I'm the interim director at Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, and I'm a resident of Central Oakland. And I'm here just to speak regarding the proposed amended zoning legislation that is before you today. OPDC is strongly in favor of council hastening the application of the Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District to all of Oakland. And we participated in conversations with other Oakland residents, neighborhood associations, and stakeholders regarding unresolved issues in zoning legislation just recently. I'm noticing in the proposed amendments that I think that you will have the chance to review today, that in the Urban Center Mixed Use District, educational classroom space is still permitted as a special exception. And I'd like to be able to voice opposition to this inclusion. Special exceptions are pretty easy hurdles to clear. The only criteria that govern the consideration by the zoning administrator for a special exception have to do with the adverse impact to traffic and property values in the immediate vicinity of the building that is applying for that proposed use. The reason for excluding it in Oakland in this particular zone is really more to do with the integrity of the Oakland Plan in general. And I would really encourage you to reconsider permitting even a special exception, educational classroom space in the Urban Center Mixed Use District. Beyond that, we were pleased to see the adjustments to the height that Councilwoman Strasburger is proposing here. And we really applaud you all for taking the time and patience to hear everybody's objections and to encourage everyone to come to consensus on a lot of the contested points of the zoning. So I'm hopeful that council will soon pass this set of bills and that we will be able to proceed with more clarity about permitted development in Oakland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings and good day in Lakayalaka'ing. In a proto-modern language, that means the light in me honors the lightning you. My title is Ikahana Hal Malkina and the Grand Inka of Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, most commonly known as the Chief of my Nation. And I wanted to speak about and continue my conversation and comments of yesterday, creating tangible, achievable pathways to promise for the children of today. I would argue that the critical race theory is not the right pathway. Upfront, it looks as if only books about gender are being questioned and some books about race. But after digging a little further, I realized that it was more of a cover-up of the miseducation of so-called Black people. About their origins, about their lineage, where do we really and truly come from? To teach a child that slavery is the beginning of their narrative can only produce horrible results. I would argue that they need to do away with teaching from a perspective that so-called Black people arrived on this earth just in time for slavery, as if we do not have a history prior to slavery. The thing that needs to be analyzed and redressed is that narrative. What do you expect for a child to think about themselves? What do you think teaching a child that they come from slaves is going to produce? Now, I get it. Every now and then, someone rises above that narrative and makes something of themselves. But this day and age, things are getting worse. These children need to know where they actually come from and who they come from and such greatness that they do come from. Do away with these educational disparities that foster such conduct in these children and youth. Create safe spaces for them. Allow and expose them to the culture that they know not of because it's been hidden and suppressed purposefully. Classism, sexism, racism must fall by the wayside. The Racial Integrity Act teaches of 1924 and exposes through the acts and deeds of many eugenics, but specifically Walter Ashby Plecker, who changed the identity of so-called Black people, erased the fact that they were Indians, and changed them into colored folks. This isn't something that I'm making up. You can look it up yourself. We must teach these children that they come from greatness and greatness they can begin to foster that in their homes, in their communities. Implement...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Poma Chatman.
Greetings, greetings and good day in Lakayalaka'ing. So I'd like to start by reading a little excerpt from the Home Rule Powers. The city of Pittsburgh has all home rule powers and may perform any function and exercise any power not denied by the Constitution. The laws of Pennsylvania or this charter which such powers or functions are presently available to the city or may in the future become available. So let's talk about the powers denied by the Constitution. One of those powers is Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, which clearly defines and excludes Indians not taxed. And the Bouvier's Dictionary gives a clear definition of what the word Indian in that article means. And it says the aborigines of this country are so-called Indians. So we are not the Native Americans. They have a different history and a different story and a different relationship and contractual agreement with Congress under Title 25. We, although the aborigines of this land who were reclassified from Indian to colored and then colored to Negro, Negro to Black, and so on and so forth, many of us have never renounced our tribal rule. And many of us are returning to our tribal rule who were assimilated forcefully without our consent, without our signature, and without our knowledge. So with that being said, the Delaware Treaty is very clear our relationship with you, city council, with the city of Pittsburgh, and with this particular area that you call Pennsylvania. And in that Delaware Treaty, it states that whereas the enemies of the United States have endeavored by every artifice in their power to possess the Indians in general with an opinion that is the design of the states aforesaid to extrapate the Indians and take possession of their country to obviate such false suggestion that the United States do engage to guarantee to the aforesaid nation of Delawares, that would be my ancestors and our heirs, all the territorial rights in the fullest and most ample manner as it has been found by former treaties, as long as said that they said Delaware nations shall abide by and hold fast, the chain of friendship now entered into. What that is saying is my ancestors, our ancestors, the aborigine Indian ancestors, made treaty with your ancestors. And this treaty was to be in line with friendship, trust, and the protections and your responsibility to protect our people against your people, against the police who don't happen to have a well-understanding of the Constitution and what that is when they take an oath, just like you all have taken an oath too. What does that oath mean? It means to uphold, protect, and defend the Constitution, i.e. uphold, protect, and defend the Indian. The aborigines of this country are so-called. I'm compelling city council to sit down with the mayor, sit down with the chief of police, and begin these dialogues of...
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is David Vatz.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Members of council, we need to create a plan for Oakland that creates a true innovation district poised for significant growth in abundant and affordable housing. We need to make a plan that rejects the systemic racism of past downzonings to create an equitable future for our city. While there's some good in the plan that's before you, overall, the plan is full of bad compromises and downzonings that will not build a world-class city. Pittsburgh has faced hard times over the past four decades. The loss of our major industries gutted our middle class and sent population fleeing for other cities and suburbs. But Pittsburgh's story over the last decade or so has been a story of redemption. We've reinvented ourselves as a city of Eds, Meds, Technology, leading the way for some of our country's most groundbreaking advances. This should come as no surprise and as a testament to the people of Pittsburgh. But we're at a crossroads. We are currently underperforming similar cities like Cincinnati, Indianapolis, and yes, even Cleveland in many regards. We're building less housing, losing more population, slowly bleeding away our tax base. This is an existential threat to our city, which will cause taxes to rise on seniors, on fixed incomes, and the most vulnerable residents if we want to maintain the same level of public services, or resolve the slow degradation of our roads, police, parks, and more. At the same time, we're seeing rents and housing costs rise, leaving some of our city's most vulnerable residents, the poor, the working class, and people of color, fleeing the city for suburbs due to having nowhere affordable to live. Luckily, this is a problem we can fix. We must amend the zoning for Oakland to allow more housing of all types to be built. We must remove restrictive zoning from Oakland and allow missing middle housing, which is in existence all over Oakland already, to be built again. We must remove parking minimums in this transit-rich and job-rich corridor to make building new housing easier. We must zone for more height in this, the third-largest commercial center of Pennsylvania. We must build more housing near the massive investments in BRT that our region is making. The downzonings of the past from across our city were rooted in racism, white flight, and redlining. We must reject the past sins of our city and look forward to a brighter future. Mayor Ganimian, Department of City Planning, I urge you to amend this plan to allow more housing in Oakland and show leadership on building of Pittsburgh with abundant housing for all. And members of council, absent significant changes, I urge you to reject the plan.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
Citizens, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Now, I have quite a few things. I'm talking fast. But first, I wanted to start off that I want to say to Mr. Lavelle, thank you. You did an excellent job at the meeting. Thank you again. Now, after the meeting, I walked up to, okay, let me explain who was at the meeting. He was there, Dan Wood, the commander from number two, a police officer, and also DeWitt Watson, who's our county council man. When we got finished speaking, I went to him and I put up my hand and I said, I want to thank you. I said, all I've been trying to tell you, all the times I was coming down to come and see what we're going through. And then he said, and seriously, he did say, and I know he felt it. He said, Ms. Brown, I never disrespect you. I've never said anything bad to you. In so many words. And I looked at him and I smiled. I said, because you don't even speak to me. Now, he took and he smiled, and then he looked and he said, I said, gotcha. And that's the truth. Do you understand? I have a better understanding of him, and I think better of him because he's an educated man. All that education, and you sit there and don't say nothing for our city, I'm not as educated as you. I was a senior in college when my son got killed. But if I had finished a degree, had a degree, and learned some of the things that I should have learned, I wouldn't be like you. You have to speak up for you. I told your mother when she came down here. You remember Ms. Harris gave him a proclamation. For what? And then his mother spoke to me. I went to her and I said, will you tell your son he has to represent us all? Now, I have a cousin who was out in Westgate. She said, the people were in a group talking about, he got a proclamation. For what? They even knew you didn't deserve it. But I'm telling you, I'm not jumping on you. I'm jumping on the actions that you do. When you take and don't fight for us, we get nothing. We're up there in that building. We don't have security. But if Kaylee Weaver Irving was living, that wouldn't happen because the older politicians respected that man. He is dunked. You don't know him. I met him, and he fought for us, and I will keep coming down to fight as much as I can. Okay, anyway, I wanted you to know what I've been saying about Tim Stevens, when he said, I have children of a mixed race. Okay, so he's saying that if you see this like-impacted, you see this like-impacted woman? If you see one like her, they're mine. But if you see a Black man like mine, he's to die. Do you understand? For him to say that I got mixed children, what was that for? You don't understand. I got a Black child that's dead because he was dark. Do you understand? Because he was black collar. The other man that jumped on him had an arm, had a thing on his bracelet. A bracelet. Did you see Sepala? Oh, he took that bracelet off. This man had one on, and they didn't take him back to jail. My husband had said, if a man beat a man so bad that they go to hospital, he needed to be in jail. He didn't go to jail. Please excuse me. I can't help it. The way my son died, it hurts me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. Very, very, very quickly, we need to make BACC, Beachview Area Concerned Citizens. I think there needs to be an effort in respecting and making them an official RCO of Beachview because the current one that I have attended a meeting or two is not working for our teens. We need to help find a way to make that, that they're back post-COVID. But that's at the new public hearing on the first for RCOs. Anyway, speaking of youth, yesterday, I was at the Rite Aid down by McDonald's Market Square across from the Gateway T-Stop, and I witnessed, I know these people very well. It's my drugstore. And I witnessed them trying to catch the youth. At that time of the day, there's a lot of youth coming in from all the schools. And he looked like such a handsome young man, and I saw him stealing food. And I said to him, I said, you don't want to do this. And he flipped me the finger, and I said, how old are you? Thirteen? He says, I'm sixteen, going on seventeen. I said, all the more reason why you don't want to do this, and you don't want to end up in Allegheny County Jail. And apparently, this is an ongoing issue downtown. These kids have lost that extra SNAP benefit. They're hungry. I left to go get some money in hopes that I can bring it back to buy him some food. He had already gone. The kids are not allowed to bring food home. My own daughter has to sneak an unopened container of milk and some food to bring home. Sometimes in the middle of the day, she's not all that hungry. Can we get our new community officers to set up right there where all these kids come and give out donated tangible snacks to meet and greet these youth, to make sure they got healthy snacks to go home with, to fill this gap that the food stamps have now been taken away from them? Our kids are hungry. For several times that I've gone to the Rite Aid at that time, or the CVS, or whatever closed store there is to all the schools that are in downtown Pittsburgh, these kids come in and it's, we're going to lose businesses down there too. They have to keep making up for the petty theft loss of food, of food. I don't care what religion, what faith you are. I don't care if you're a pagan. I don't care what religion you are. You help feed the hungry, and these kids are hungry. What better way to get the community, the new officers, to give a smile and feed?
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that'll take us to our standing committee's agenda for today. Our first committee is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill 1108.
Bill 1108, An Ordinance Amending Title II, Article 5, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayors designate their under the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees their under in accordance with Ordinance 237, Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
This is...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
With discussion? This is still being worked on, so maybe if we can have a motion to hold for two weeks?
Motion for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held two weeks. That takes us to Bill 1151.
Bill 1151, A Resolution Amending 260 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant P.C. for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by $100,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $490,000.
Motion to approve. Oh.
Second. Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1153.
Bill 1153, Resolution Amending 458 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips for legal services in connection with collective bargaining by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $300,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1214.
Bill 1214, Resolution Amending Resolution 124 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the offices of management and budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Compass Natural Gas for professional services relating to the leasing and maintenance of a mobile CNG fueling station by extending the term through December 31, 2025, and not-to-exceed amount by $378,000 for a new cost not to exceed $756,000.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So we got the email late yesterday afternoon, and if you recall, after discussion at the table last week, we especially wanted to see more detail about kind of what are the comparable costs? What are the CNG costs, the CNG-fueled waste haulers to purchase and then also operate, kind of blending in all of the costs so we can see what the relative differences are? I have to admit, I was even reading the email and the attachments. I couldn't draw out a direct summary. I saw a detailed spreadsheet about there being basically a maybe 10% more fuel-efficient cost for the cost of the fuel per mile. So we received a spreadsheet with the kind of detailed mileage for each of 10 diesel vehicles, and how much we paid for the diesel fuel per gallon, and a spreadsheet of like exactly how many miles each CNG truck drove and how much that fuel cost per gallon. But that's simply operating costs. We know that our diesel vehicles are, actually, I mean, some of the things that are operating our fleet, right? We've been complaining for years that they were operating in only three miles per gallon. So I still am dissatisfied that we're getting an apples-to-apples cost because it really should have been like compared to like newer diesel vehicles, right? Like, why do we buy, and why are we buying these compressed natural gas vehicles if they're just a kind of stepping stone or a bridge in between the fleet that we would ideally want? And that this isn't our perfect fleet, it's just our kind of temporary fleet. Why switch to the CNG, bear the extra costs of the leasing, and basically the creation of our own personal CNG fueling station because there wasn't a fueling station we could use? Buy more expensive trucks and...
And, um, I don't, I don't see that kind of 70 cents per gallon fuel cost really justifying the difference. But was, what was stated in the email that I don't remember us having the conversation before? Is that the cost of the trucks are covered by a grant, a state grant? So that the state is offering municipalities in Pennsylvania, basically free compressed natural gas trucks? But I, I don't see any details, so I don't have anyone else any more details about that. Um, and I still, I, I hate that we continue to add these trucks to our fleet If they're just holding places, if they're just really temporary vehicles. There were vehicles that we're not committing to, are hopefully moving in. We might as well just buy brand new diesel that are way more fuel efficient, less expensive? And that we have flexibility for fueling and would dramatically reduce particulate matter, right? A brand new diesel vehicle on the road is not comparable to the really old, very polluting, very low mileage diesel trucks that we have been operating. So I'm still dissatisfied with this, for sure. If members want to have a longer discussion, we can bring our, our administering people to the table. That I, I mean, that's, I don't know how much of us had time to really process it. I think I just got the email last night, lately, yesterday afternoon. Um, so I intend to vote no, and I don't know if anyone else has questions, so. I'm not gonna bring everyone to the table. I know we talked for an hour about it last week. And I do appreciate that you're here and I appreciate your time, uh, but I'll just leave my comments there.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and I, um, I'm not sure whether I want to vote no or hold it again or work through it. Because I keep hearing that, um, you know, how important communities that have been disinvested And are so important to this administration and to others. And yet, here we are, Ferrywood, a, an area that was flooded, that people lost their homes. The housing project was shut down, and we have two warehouses down there That employ people from this community. They don't do what they, they don't talk about doing things, they just do it. They hire people from the community, they hire people from, you know, across the city of Pittsburgh and, and beyond. They, um, have a natural gas gas station in Ferrywood, and yet we're saying, and they're right off of 79. But for some reason, it's not convenient to get to. But it's convenient for UPS to use for their distribution. It's convenient for Amazon to use and increase their distribution center there. It's convenient enough for Giant Eagle to get their warehouses there, uh, and two warehouses. It's convenient enough for other people to grow and expand there. It's convenient enough for RIDC Park to move into. But it's not convenient for the city of Pittsburgh employees. Come on. I'm not buying this at all. So, for me, I, I, I'd like to hold it for one more week until we have a discussion about giving back to the people Who give to the city of Pittsburgh. During the pandemic, it was Giant Eagle who helped feed everybody through the food bank. They helped distribute food throughout the city of Pittsburgh. They've helped us with employment, they've helped us with job training, and they've helped us across the city of Pittsburgh in every neighborhood. So, and invested in our neighborhoods with stores and other things that they're doing, and then employed the people from the community, including people with disabilities. I think that they've done a fantastic job in that area too. And yet, we repay them by saying, um, you're not convenient enough for us to get our gas from you, natural gas from. So for me today, I, I would like to vote to hold for at least one more week.
Councilman Clark.
Thank you. Um, I pretty much agree with both of you. You know, I, I don't like the idea of, I feel like it's an experiment almost of some sort. I don't know how these vehicles are gonna work out, but so, and permit me interrogatory with Council, Council President. So you're saying they have a natural gas station in your district, really?
In the city of Pittsburgh.
In the city of Pittsburgh, right. And yet, we're building our own station to fuel these vehicles.
For convenience.
Is it, is the money that...
I think we should try to see if it works first at this place, and then if it works, then maybe we consider our own location.
Is, is the money?
And I know they want to come to the table, but I'm not here for the sales pitch today. I'm just not, I'm tired of it, to be honest with you. I think the disinvestment in my side of town is, is, and your side of town is more than evident.
Is the money that we're spending for the fueling station covered in the grant? Or is that coming out of our coffers? Do we know?
I don't know, and I don't care.
Granted, it's for the vehicles, not for the fueling.
Right, so the fuel, the fueling station will, we will foot that bill. Yet, we have a fueling station nearby. It sells the same stuff at work. Yeah, okay, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on holding it if you'd like or further exploring it.
Just for at least a week, and then we can work through this a little bit, if you don't mind.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Thank you.
With, with discussion, because I know Councilman, uh, Wilson wanted to chime in.
Yeah, can I say some stuff? Mm-hmm. Alright, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wasn't really gonna, um, weigh in on this, because I have another, the next bill was one that I was interested in. Interested in this, just I'm recalling our initial discussion On why we're investing in CNG, and, uh, my understanding was That the trucks that are on the road right now are diesel, And to lessen the pollutants that our residents would, uh, breathe in, The CNG would be less, um, you know, it would be, be better for their lungs. So, I, I'm just, um, you know, I don't like the fact that, you know, this is, uh, this is happening. I'd like to just go straight to, to EV packers if that's, if that's possible. Um, so I'm interested in the conversation, but also, If we can have an interrogative here, because I'm not, I'm not clear on what's going on. So, we've asked for a reason why they can't use the Giant Eagle one, and we didn't get an answer, or we did get an answer?
I got an answer today saying we can discuss it later at the table. So, I, that tells me that there's a sales pitch I'm not going for. If I wanted an answer, it should have been in the email when I sent the email, yesterday.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, like...
Right. It's a different fueling station, because they chose that fueling station.
I'm just saying, it's a different kind of fuel, but...
It's a different kind of fuel?
It's a different kind? Let me send a message to somebody who knows about fuel, not somebody who can, who's here for a sales pitch. I'll find out in one minute.
Anyone here now?
Yeah.
Let's bring someone up.
Okay, wait, just your turn then.
What's that?
Wait till it's, wait till it's, you have a bill like this that you want to hold.
Alright, I'll step back.
I think you should.
So everyone's aware, we're currently on the motion to hold for one week. You're allowed to have discussion on the motion to hold, but that's what we're on. Councilman?
I'll let the President get her answer.
Well, so I, yeah, I'm, I'm open to holding too, because I feel like there's questions then to answer next week. But just to put out the que, so, just so my understanding, well, I guess I do have a, a couple of questions, so. And forgive me if this is, was in the, so, a mobile CNG fueling station, does that mean that the, that the station itself is mobile? And leasing and maintenance, so we already, I'd like to know, have we already built and paid for something? And this is just maintaining it? Um, my understanding from last week Is that we can't do electric because like the technology isn't there, and it takes too long to charge, whatever. Like the technology isn't there for these large trucks with electric. We've already bought these CNG trucks, and we can't get out of that, like they're coming. Um, but that said, also, like just paying more money for a stepping stone solution is not something that seems, and as Council President said, if there is an option, like an existing space where, where, you know, we could be just Fueling elsewhere, that, that seems like a reasonable thing to do. But at any rate, there's definitely more questions. And just, just one thing I want to say, just with the report, and this is maybe because I'm new and I, I maybe sort of like put myself on Front Street a little bit here, but, um, A, a lot of times, it's like we ask for reports and then we get, but there was so much information in that report. It was, I mean, I opened it up and I'm like, okay, I know this is just like a ton of numbers and whatever, without like the specific answers to the questions. And that, and, and I appreciate all the work that went into the report, right? But it was like so mu, it was almost like information overload. And at least for, for me, I felt, and again, it's probably because I'm new, but I felt a little nervous to sort of, because there was no way that I could dive, deep dive into this report In the time allowed, and it sort of made my initial feeling was like, oh gosh, I should just say yes Because this is so confusing and I don't want to look like I don't know what I'm talking about. So, I feel like there, there should be a, a middle ground when, when we ask for reports. Like there's, needs to be a certain amount of distillation and clarity, so that we really can be like, okay, This is what I was looking for. Like these were the, you know, not just like content dump. As much, and it seems like a lot of work, at any rate, that was, that, that's just sort of, I think I've made myself clear in an unclear way, but...
Gotcha.
That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, all those in favor of a one week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week.
Thank you. Thank you.
That takes us to Bill 1215.
Bill 1215, Resolution Authorizing A Cooperation Agreement Or Agreements Providing For The Transfer Of Funds Not-To-Exceed $9,465,991 To The City Of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority For The Purchase And Leasing Of Vehicles, Equipment And Accessories, Equipment Support Infrastructure And Professional Services For Use By City Of Pittsburgh Departments.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Yeah, I'd like to have, uh, Patrick and, um, Brandon come to the table. If you could state your name and title for record.
Sure. Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer in the Office of Management and Budget.
Brandon Walton, Fleet Services Manager, Office of Management and Budget.
Alright, thanks for coming to the table. So, I appreciate the email that you sent on Monday. And, um, I didn't give enough, uh, time to, for you all to respond based on the time that I responded to you. But you did follow up and say you come to the table and we can hash it out here, so I just want to, so, You sent something over, clearly states there was a resolution passed, the ELA, if that's what they call it, That they have to be mindful of greenhouse gases. What I didn't see in there, and I didn't see anything additional, was just how that's, like how, or tracking it, or how that's quantified? You know, and I guess I would expect like, expect like, um, you know, when you go to, I don't know, If anyone's trying to keep track of a goal, there's some percent of like, we're, you know, 50% there, 40% there to our goal. And so, can someone help me understand like, how the ELA is tracking, getting to as close to a net zero fleet? Or, or abiding by that, that policy of the greenhouse gas? Uh, like limiting greenhouse gases based on, um, you know, the fleet that they pick?
So, currently, the, the ELA follows, um, the guidelines from the city. So, whatever, whatever the city budgets for the ELA to purchase is what we, um, what we move for. We buy the most fuel efficient of whatever model, um, or fossil fuel free if possible. Right now, the technology is, just hasn't caught up. Um, as for tracking, we work really closely with Pitt, Pittsburgh Region's Clean Cities, And we provide a report to them annually, um, with our vehicles and they compile it. Um, I actually am working on that report this year, or, uh, as we speak, uh, for this year to, um, To get that percentage of where we're at currently, um, which, we're getting close to 10%.
So they do the calculation?
They help us with it, yes.
So what have they thought about past reports?
We're actually, um, recommended by them to other cities and other, um, counties For advice on, on, uh, moving towards a, um, electric or, um, fossil fuel fre, free fleet, Uh, just because of, of our experience and, and how quickly we've moved. We're actually moving a lot quicker than some other places.
Okay. Well, I'd be eager to, to know about how they, you know, what they think about this, um, what would this be? Is it an annual report?
Yes. I can send it to you when I...
Yeah, whenever it comes in, you're gonna see it. Alright, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our new paper, which is Bill 1235.
Bill 1235, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant To Chapter 210, Acceptance Of Gifts To The City Of The City Code, The Mayor And The Director Of The Office Of Management And Budget To Accept A Donation From Wheeling Engineering Of GPS Telematics Devices For Emergency Vehicles Valued At $39,510.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
And if we can also have a motion to waive the rules of council. Um, you'll see that PLI has, uh, training that was done, um, by the Building and Fire Code Academy That totals $6,000. It's the only approved vendor that can actually provide the training. And they've had three separate trainings, um, as well as the police have had to rent undercover vehicles from DALLER, Which is the approved vendor as well. So we can have a motion to waive...
Motion to waive the rules?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The wa, most, the rules have been waived. All those in favor of approving the invoices, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are now approved. Thank you. That takes us to the P cards, I believe. Yes, need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works And Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 1228.
Bill 1228, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Mobility And Infrastructure To Enter Into An Agreement Or Agreements With The Allegheny County Conservation District For The Purpose Of Receiving And Spending Grant Funds In The Amount Of $220,000 To Support Storm Water Remediation And Road Paving On Haverhill Street.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Kalkil?
Um, no, my question is Haverhill, I believe. That's my district. Does anybody, no? Anybody claiming that other than me?
You can have it.
Oh, that's East Hills, okay. Okay, I think I have a Haverhill also.
It's my district.
Okay, Rev. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I just have, uh, again, not specifically to this one, but just about grants in general. Um, it, it would, I would, I would really like to see, you know, at least for my district, And, you know, other council members can speak for their own, but I would, I would like to know, To sort of see a plan of grants, esp, you know, that, that, and not just DOME, But really all the departments, that grants that they are applying for, for things in our district. Because there are grants out there, there are things that we need, and those are the things that we, and I'm, and this is, you know, I, no, no comment on, on this particular project, right? It's not in my district. But, you know, I know that there are things that we need, and if there are grants out there to help, you know, Do the things that we need, those are the grants that the departments should be applying for. And, uh, so it would be nice to have, I don't know if that's something that we would need to legislate or, or what, But it would, it would be nice if it was just provided and we didn't need to legislate it, right? But just sort of like a grant plan for the, the year, um, with, you know, identification of, you know, The, these are the types of grants that are available for this, these types of things, and...
President?
I just want to say, I somewhat agree with that. Actually, I just had a conversation yesterday unrelated to DOME, Um, for another department that's applying, that we applied for, it came under Councilman Kalkil's, uh, committee, I believe. But that we applied for a grant for another nonprofit, and the council was unaware of it. And so I'm just, from my, my understanding is there's so many that we apply for, And, and having everything go through council would be, would probably hold up a lot of things. So I think we need to come up with some process, and I did ask our budget office and our solicitor To work on something so the council is more informed of everything. So I, I think we're on the same page with that, but that's for every department. I think we definitely need to know a little bit more about what's going on and what we're applying for in the cities, What the cities on the hook for here.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Um, so thank you, Madam President and Councilwoman, for bringing that up as well. So we, we have asked questions about that before, and I just want to elaborate briefly. That the problem is that has, I've seen in my district is when these grants have happened, They may or may not be aligned with what the neighborhood has wanted. It may be possibly been in, in, in opposition to what they've been working towards for a very long time, right? And so, to get a kind of, a project that falls from the sky, um, in a neighborhood Or right in the same park that isn't the one that has, you know, had petitions circulated And has been a longtime aspiration, and has really been a shared vision, unfunded, But then a random other thing kind of falls in, or, um, similarly, that... then a random other thing kind of falls in, or similarly, that there's a proposed road project where, again, 15 years, almost 20 years of community planning around the intersection, without any conversation or inclusion, that, or now I'm trying to bring kind of opposing, like, city department vision together with community vision, because they were, just didn't know that there was a community vision. And so we can do better than this. We can definitely do better than this. So, and I, again, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I thank you for bringing it up, and, and I'm happy to try to work towards a better system.
Can I just say, maybe, you and-
Well, I was gonna say-
-should work together on that.
It's, it's not something that needs legislated. We just need to reach out to the Director of OMB and ask for a grants plan. We can work on that.
Yeah, no, it's not me. I asked our solicitor to find out what we can do with that.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick?
Well, just with regards to what Councilwoman Gross just said, I mean, I, even, even just last night, for example, I was, I mean, just about, I mean, I don't, if, if you'd like to come to the table, you're welcome to come to-
Ask me to come?
Yeah. Just since we have you here, I'm, just for example, last night, I was at a community meeting in Squirrel Hill, and there was a representative from the mayor's office who came talking about made, you know, changes that are being made to a project in Squirrel Hill, that, that my office has been heavily involved in discussing with the community back and forth, and I had no idea. So I'm sitting there in a community meeting, hearing about changes to a major, the Dallas intersection, right? Something that has been a huge issue in my district. I mean, I have countless emails about this project, and then I find out about it in a community meeting, right, from, from a representative from the mayor's office. And I'm sitting there like, what, you know, that's, and, and again, I don't even know if it was accurate, it was like a crosswalk was being removed, and what, you know, and, and I couldn't respond. So, how, how can we remedy this situation between working with council members, you know, understanding that we are the ones ultimately that know the, the needs of, because we're the ones working with our community groups? And, and our community groups have spent years, as Councilwoman Gross said, advocating for various, you know, you know, whatever it may be in the roadway. So what, what can we do to, to work better together?
Yeah, I think for the specific meeting from, that was recently, that when we have public meetings that are scheduled, if we haven't reached out to your office in advance, then we certainly should be.
No, no, this was a community meeting, just a monthly community meeting.
I would want to know more about what those changes were, and if, I don't know about that specific example that you're sharing. But absolutely, you know, we have regular check-ins. I have that with a number of council members. That's the opportunity where we talk about a lot of specific projects. You know, our department has $200 million worth of projects we're trying to do right now, so sometimes we might miss the mark on making sure that every update has gotten where it needs to go. But we can continue to work on that. We are working with Neighborhood Services, that sounds like that's probably-
Yeah.
-the office that was there last night, and strengthening our community engagement process. So we can make sure that we've got a better line to counsel before those, those neighbor meetings.
So then, I guess that's a question that's just for me, because I, I have to say, as much as I like the Neighborhood Services team, and they do, but this sort of middle connection between, you know, and, and for, I'm not sure why, but it seems to happen a lot with DOME in particular. I don't notice it as much with the other, but-
We have a lot of work, and a lot of work that the public engages every single day.
Yeah, but, but this sort of middle, you know, middle connection, where it's like neighborhoods, either, it, it, it doesn't, there seem, I mean, maybe there's a disconnect, right? Is, is the message being lost between these two? It would be much easier, I, for me anyway, to just be able to have, to work directly with you, and, and specifically the experts in your department, for whatever the issue may be.
And we do, you know, we've emailed multiple times this week. We have an in-person meeting this Friday, so we do work directly. The Neighborhood Services Group, if, we have one municipal traffic engineer, so the expectation of that one technical expert being able to attend 90 neighborhoods worth of meetings is just, that's unsustainable for the position and unrealistic. So that's why Neighborhood Services, which we are very grateful for their, their ability to be that community presence, I know that they're in the process of hiring an infrastructure-specific person, so I think maybe a little bit of the rub you're talking about, about the, having a really focused infrastructure person who can make sure that the communication's happening, they're gonna add that. And I think that you're gonna see a lot of improvement with the, what the dynamic you're describing, too.
And then, just since, since we're here and we're talking about it, another issue, and again, it came up at this community meeting, this regular community meeting, there were projects that were brought up by the representative from the mayor's office, a number of projects, and the, the, the community leaders were instructed for, for, it was a crosswalk, a couple of crosswalk things specifically, where they have for years been advocating for these crosswalks, right? For years, they were told by the representative at the mayor's office, from the mayor's office, who's new, that they should make 311, that they should rally the neighbors and make 311 requests. And that is, I have to say, extremely frustrating for neighborhood groups who, for years, have been communicating directly with DOME and said, hey, look, this is what we need, like, we're telling you, this is what we need. And then to be told, oh, we'll just go tell everybody to call 311. And that also increases our work, at least for me, that increases my workload, because I have people calling 311, and then thinking that something's gonna happen, and it doesn't, and so.
Yeah, I mean, as a resident, that is frustrating. I think that it's, it's going to be hard, even when there is a dedicated infrastructure person, to know exact history of every single project, and the status of requests in 311, because there are thousands. But I do think, and through our map portal, and having things like our traffic calming map that we put up there, our project status map, our department is really trying to increase that transparency and keep down that frustration, so that people can find out the statuses of their requests without having to call somebody, without having to go to a meeting necessarily, having something that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, that transparency may not be there yet for 311-specific requests, but when you put a 311 request in, we are working on making sure that you get a consistent response from the department, so that it's not, doesn't matter who answered that request that day, you're gonna get the same consistent information and an understanding of whether your request is something that is being evaluated, if it's something that's already been accommodated, or if it's something that we're unable to accommodate, for example, with crosswalks. Sometimes we get requests for crosswalks in locations that are uncontrolled, and that we do not believe we can make safe in the current environment. But the public deserves that information about their requests, so they're not just left hanging, I agree.
Yeah, so I feel like we're talking past each other a little bit here. I don't, if you forgive me, I, and, you know, this is, when you have a community group, right, an RCO, that's been around forever, these are people, and, and they have, they have come to you, and they've said numerous times, this is what we want. You know what the community wants, this is the thing that they want. Now, if it's a no, right, if it's a no, you can't have that because A, B, you know, for whatever reason, there's not enough money, there's not whatever, then you come and you tell them that, right? You tell them no. But, but to just say, oh, like, 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 like no one's ever heard of the request before, or, oh, make a 311 request, and we'll tell that individual person who made a 311 request, that, you know, for XYZ, we can't do this, or this isn't a priority, right? But these neighborhood groups, I mean, I understand the data and, but, but that's the whole point of these neighborhood groups, is they are here to communicate, they, they are the ones gathering the information, right? They are the community. So if, and, you know, I know I just wrote to you about a stop sign and a line, right? Like, if, if something has been asked for, for years, right, that, that's really, I mean, at the end of the day, right, we all work for the people of Pittsburgh, right, including DOME. So I feel like there's certainly a way that we can do both, right? Work on the larger projects, but also give communities the, the smaller, the smaller things that we're asking for, and, and then I think they would be more understanding of the constraints around larger projects, right? Because they know that, you know, you know, maybe I can't get like, the, the big thing that I want, but you know what? When I engage with my city government about smaller things, right? A stop sign, a line, a whatever, or getting, getting a tree cut, I mean, that's a deep, you know what I mean? Like, getting the branch, if they know that when they engage with their city government on the smaller, simple things, those things get done, it's fairly easy to get those things done, then, then they're more forgiving on, on the bigger picture stuff, so.
I have a lot of thoughts. I think what you're describing was someone not being able to respond to a specific history of 311 requests, someone who you said was new from the mayor's office that attended a community meeting.
No, no, not, not a history of 311 requests, a history of a community group coming to DOME and the city, and asking for a crosswalk at an area, and, and, and again, and maybe this is an issue with this new setup, right, of having this sort of middle person between it, but the mayor's office should never have been put in a position to come to this meeting in Squirrel Hill and say, I don't, I don't know about this. I don't know about this crosswalk, right?
There's an opportunity to learn. You know, we're all learning here. There's 300,000 residents, there's, DOME has something like 63 different service request types in 311 alone. So I, I hear what you're saying, you want to make sure that there's responsiveness to people's concerns, you're upset that there was a disconnect between a representative who went to the community and the backstory. I assure you that DOME probably has some information that we can provide, and that this is really good feedback for our team that does go out, so that we can make sure, hey, next time, maybe we can pull some data for you, and we can get you some histories of projects that might get called on. So I think there's opportunities for the communication pieces with what you're talking about. In terms of the, being able to respond to requests, we've got, you know, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a long conversation about the number of people we have, how much work they're doing, which is a lot. Our process for responding to specific things like crosswalks, whether they're yeses or nos, but you're right, that the public deserves to know, if it's a no, why it's a no. And if it is a yes, they deserve to know when it's gonna be acted on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out that it was not DOME's decision to move the communications person out of DOME to the mayor's office, to the office of, or to the communications office, whatever, under the mayor's office. And, and, or to move all of the sort of addressing of concerns that relate to DOME to the, I don't know the official name of it, the Office of Public Engagement, Community Services in the, in the mayor's office. So I think if we're gonna have a conversation about this and the relationship between, and the communication between those offices and the public, we need to have them at the table, and also ask them, how are they improving their relationship and their communication with DOME, to make sure that they have all the information and they're as prepared as possible with this history, with the institutional memory as much as possible of the neighborhood? Because if, if DOME wasn't there, to no fault of their own, either because they're short-staffed, which we know they are, or because the mayor's office has now taken on this role, you know, we need to be talking to the people who are actually at the meeting, too. So if it's part of a conversation, a bigger conversation, I welcome that, because I completely agree that we need to improve the processes, to ensure that the burden does not fall on council members, to continually, like, have to be our own organizers and advocates for the things that the community want, and then to see them, you know, and then to see projects that maybe the community doesn't want come in, and, you know, have to deal with that sensitive situation where, like, it's part of a plan, but it's not what the community's asking for. Like, I've been there, too, and I get that. And, yeah, the systems to communicate that back to the community has to, has to improve. But wanted to point out the dynamics that led to where we are right now, where, you know, DOME isn't necessarily present at the, at the meeting, is not entirely the doing of, of the leadership of DOME. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I know that, you know, we, sometimes when people come to the table, we give people our time. But I think when you understand that it's because we are advocating for our constituents and our residents, and it's received in a way that members feel respected back, then I think you have a much better relationship, and working relationship with the members. And so I'm gonna say, I know that Councilwoman Warwick is obviously very in touch with her community, she was elected to represent them, and I think that maybe it would be best if, and I know that the administration was talking about, maybe possibly the three of you getting together, you and the administration, the two of you in the administration, I think maybe that would be more helpful than us sitting at this table every week and feeling like members are disrespected or not valued. And I think that may not be your intent, but sometimes that's how, you know, it comes across, sometimes when people are working with members. And I just want them to feel respected and valued at the table as well. And, and I want you to also feel valued and respected at the table. So I think that there's a way to do that, I think we just need to, to get that meeting together. But I just want to say, I think it's, I think the tone has to come from the top down. I think that people have to know that council members are a, a team with the administration, we're working together, we're working with the directors, that we are a valued part of this, of this equation. And I think, once we feel that, things will go so much smoother. And I think right now, people are starting to feel a little bit of tension, a little bit of, you know, maybe devalued in some cases. And I think that if that's gonna happen, council's gonna push back. And I just want to remind people that council controls the budget, and they can, they can also restructure government, and that means every department. So I want people to remember that when they come to the table, when they're working with the members, and I want them to realize that there's enough members here that stick together. We may, we may differ on a lot of things, there's one thing we don't differ on, we want our districts to be respected, and we want the council to be respected as a body. So I just want to say that. And I, and I'm looking forward to us working together on, on some future things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman-
Hi, Director. So I no longer am the Chair of Public Works in DOME, I don't know if you know that yet? Okay. I'd still like to continue our meetings, because so much of what goes on in my district involves DOME in so many ways. This communications expert, you had a communications person that you lost? Who was it?
We shared a 50% with EPW, who, Emily Bourne, who's now with the press office for the mayor.
So do you not have that person?
Correct.
They're not communicating for you in any way-
Well, I mean, she's engaging with the department, but she's not within the department any longer.
Is that, is that a valuable loss to you? I mean, when I hear Councilwoman Warwick, and I don't know, I can't remember her, I can't remember what role she played, but obviously, do you miss that person? Is what I'm asking you?
Yeah, departments in other cities that are like ours have entire communications teams that are geographically organized, that go out, and they are the experts on all of the projects and the inner workings that are happening within those areas, and they're able to, to answer those questions more readily. But the new structure, there's a lot of opportunity there, too. You know, now we have a unified place within the city government that cross-department collaboration, and a focus on specifically public engagement with direction and leadership from experts in that arena is also really beneficial.
I've said many times, I know firsthand, because, you know, Chair in your department, you either need less responsibility or more resources. I don't know which one, it's not for me to decide, but I, and I didn't realize you lost a communications person to the mayor's office in this. I don't think it was wise, but, okay, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Well, the only, well, let me just start off by saying, did Emily go into the, the district, or did she answer constituent calls?
Um, she worked on drafting our press releases, and providing responses for community meetings, and did attend community meetings at times as well.
They're like, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I remembered in the budget hearings, in terms of the, the, you know, the mayor's creation of the Neighborhood Services, that the, the whole conversation was based on like, government relations and community relations. These are my questions to them, and really, the only, the last, well, I've only been on council for, for three years, but my understanding when I came in was that there was really one department that had someone that was like a liaison between the public, and that was PLI. And then, so it wasn't like something, like, I never saw DOME had, you know, someone, like Nick Ross came to the, you know, the actual engineer came out a bunch of times, all the time. And that was what, that was the change that I saw recently. I just want to be clear on that, this, I'm not, I don't have an opinion on that, that I'm expressing to you, I'm just saying, like, just in terms of the conversation, how these departments communicate, and how the mayor office, the mayor's office sees that, that they're gonna take on that responsibility. So, I know we have a couple, couple things coming up, that, like, some traffic calming meetings that the community wants, and they want- travel coming, meetings that the community wants, and they want certain people there. So I'm just interested to see how this, this all continues to work out with, with Neighborhood Services. I have seen Rebecca and her team being very active on responses to, to some, you know, constituent concerns that are pretty, pretty complex, and, and it looks like there has been some success there. So, I don't know, just looking forward to see how this continues. Thanks.
May I make one quick response? So you mentioned Nick Ross. He stayed with the department for about a year, and in his exit interview, he cited the having to participate and stand in front of the public and often get yelled at as being a reason for his departure. We've had four people hold that one position that were required by state code to have. We've had four different people, if you include acting in that role. And a big part of the challenge of that role is being the technical expert whose professional license is on the line, signing designs, providing leadership to their group, but then also the, the public-facing side of it. So that's why we've been really grateful for the support from Neighborhood Services and from the press office because it's helped the person in that role feel more confident and be able to focus on their core work, which is as the technical expert. But you're right, there's opportunity to, to bridge that gap further.
Yeah, I am glad you brought that up because Nick is a, a good past employee to bring up because I, he was my constituent as well. And I'd known him previously to obtain that position and just knowing him throughout having that position. He's put in front of a lot of, you know, that engineer is put in front of a lot of, a lot of public meetings that get pretty, get pretty interesting, especially when you talk about taking away parking spaces, adding a white lane. Yeah, so there's a lot of different things that come up, and I could see it wa, like wearing someone down. And so I've never been concerned about who is going to be at the meeting to be the face of a department, but more so what that person's equipped with. So for instance, Nick is easily able to, Nick, you know, the traffic engineer is easily able to, to say to the public, you know, to pull from their, from their knowledge at the meeting and say explicitly like, why their stop sign can't go here. And so it's just really just, that's why I'm saying I'm curious to know how this all plays out because I know the public, it gets helpful for them to understand that right in the moment. So, you know, I'm pretty sure you could equip, you know, someone in Neighborhood Services to be familiar with that, that information, but that's just kind of my, that would be my recommendation, yeah, to have like these individuals be fully equipped to answer those types of questions on the spot, at least from my end, in the meetings that I've attended, you know, in my community to see, you know, that, that's what they would want. So thanks.
Madam President?
I'm just gonna say, I think, I think it's a difficult situation. Domi is created without a lot of direction, I think, in some cases, and it's, it's been growing and changing. But I think that a lot of times, what I struggle with is hearing directors having to, having to have somebody speak for them at meetings. Because I come from a time, when I came on board, we had Rob Kaczarowski, who had both, all the functions of Domi and DPW, Act 47, reduced staff, and yet he went to meetings and spoke to the public and had great respect from people across the, so I'm trying to understand what happened since then. And maybe it's Domi's doing more and doing more projects, but maybe the projects that don't need done because we managed to get along well back then and things were okay. So I think that when I see, and I just want to, you know, really say that, I think, you know, there's a lot of people that, that did a lot of things back then. I didn't realize how valuable what it was, what they did was, including going to community meetings and talking to the public. But we work for the public. So when somebody takes a job here, whether it pays well, whether it doesn't pay well, you either like working for the public and being a public servant, or you don't. And so if that's not a job for somebody here, you know, who feels like that's why they wanted to leave and they didn't like the meetings or something like that, if that's not a job for a director who doesn't feel like they have time or want to make the time to respond to the public, then they need to rethink their, their position here with serving the public because we serve the public. And our public wants to know, they want to have a say in a lot. And I told you this once before, I think sometimes we gave the public too much say in some, some of the projects. Because if it's a safety issue, we shouldn't have a whole lot of say. It's either a safety issue, and this is the way it's done according to code, and we listen to some things, you know, to, to a certain extent, but safety should be the priority, not somebody dictating, you know, what we have done because the, but at the same time, there's so much, so low-lying fruit that we could do, fixing a road, putting up a stop sign, you know, putting in a crosswalk, things that mean so much to people, and we resist because we didn't do it, it didn't go through our process. And it's just to me, it's, we're, we're making enemies and creating enemies of the people we serve and for no reason. I mean, for, for things that seem so simple. And I, I just think it's a greater conversation we have to have. And, and I do think that I, I could pick up the phone and call you when I have an issue, and I, and I thank you for being responsive to me. But also, I, you know, it matters to me that people respond to and respect the public, too. So, thank you.
Warwick and Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, I mean, I just basically reiterate what Council President just said. I mean, at the end of the day, this, the, the, what, and I don't know if it's a culture within Domi as a department, but this notion that, oh, everybody just likes to hate on Domi, that, that, that's not, that, that is crea, like, that issue needs to be addressed, and there's a reason for it, right? Like, there's a reason when, I mean, again, and I can just, as a resident, right, when, and I, I've sent you, you know, when you have a crosswalk to a school every day, nobody stops. And for years, for years, the community has been asking for a stop, for a stop sign, or, or you have a, a strip of parked cars down an avenue that gets smashed over and over and over again. And Domi just does nothing, right? And then when a request comes in and says, oh, well, actually, a stop sign would be less safe because of X, Y, Z studies that have been done, that does not, that, that, that makes people angry, right? And it should. It should. It would make you, it, 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 makes me angry as a resident, it would make you angry as a resident if that was going on in, right in your community, right? When you've done all the due diligence, you've talked to your community, you've done all the things. And it's just, you know, and then at the same time, large-scale projects going on. So, I mean, where's the, where, where's the middle ground? Why, how is Domi going to meet people where they are and provide the service that, that people need them to provide?
I mean, I guess what's challenging for me sitting here is that, you know, from one council member, from the council president, we're told, you know, for safety-based decisions where we've got federal guidance and there's established traffic engineering protocol, but that's, but that's what I do. But from, but from, from here, when we have acted that, we're, you know, it's recommended that we don't do it that way and that we just do what we're requested of the public.
But you've done nothing for years about a, a little tiny crosswalk. So is the answer to do nothing?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We have, we have, I'm sure, if you tell me the location of the crosswalk that you're referring to from the meeting the other night, I'd be happy to look into it.
That's a different, that's a different crosswalk, but, you know.
Do you mind if I just say some?
Yeah, please. Sorry, I'm just.
Well, I say, I think sometimes we give the public too much. I think what I said, what I'm trying to say is, but that's the process you've chosen. That's the process you've requested, to call 3-1-1, to make the request. So that's what you've requested. I'm saying, I don't know that I ever would have gone down that road, but since you have, here's where we are, and that's why I said, made the comment. So, but I think this is what the problem is. This, this interaction is like tense all the time.
Mr. Chair, I've had my hand raised for quite some time for the first round.
Thank you. I apologize. Are you finished, Councilwoman Warwick? Okay. Councilman Kraus, I apologize. I didn't see your hand.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to know if members have any questions regarding the receipt of the grant funds as they relate to stormwater remediation and road paving on Hayver Hill Street. If not, that's that we call the vote, please.
Trying to redirect council's attention to the actual bill on the table. Councilman Coghill?
Okay. I, I agree with Councilwoman Warwick. You know, I don't like being surprised in my neighborhood about a project that I know nothing about. And we've had instances up in Beachview, you know, with the reconstruction or Phase Two of the, you know, redevelopment there. So I guess I just really want to know, you know, we're going to have changes, just as Councilwoman Warwick is kind of directing in her own district. We had similar, and we've talked about this. Who am I going to talk to? Who's coming to my community and going to say, here's the deal, here's what we're doing, you, you lost your communications person? So, so who is going to come and explain and answer questions for the community?
We lost our communications person, but we gained the Neighborhood Services Group providing, providing that role, managing meeting attendance. As I mentioned, they're hiring an infrastructure-specific person. That's going to be focused, I believe, on the work of Public Works and Domi so that they can really become an expert in those projects and be really well-informed. I don't know that they've hired that person yet, but that position is in the budget. Maybe that's the new person who attended last week. I haven't met them yet, if it is. But that is the, that is the face. I'm always available for any questions that come from your offices, of course, but for the meeting attendance, we're hoping to, to really skill, skill up and staff up with an infrastructure-specific communications person for most, most meetings. For meetings that we are required to host for specific projects, for example, the PennDOT process, if we have certain federal funds, there are certain project meetings that are required as part of the use of those funds. Those typically are more technical, and those will be staffed by our staff directly because they are more technical presentations. But the community meetings and attending, you know, RCO meetings and things like that, we anticipate that it would be the Neighborhood Services representatives.
Which is the same person you had as a communications?
No, actually. She's serving as a press officer within the press group, so I think focused more on things like press releases, media engagement, those sorts of things. They're hiring a new person within the Neighborhood Services Group, which is also where 3-1-1 has moved to. And so I do think that closing the gap between sort of the 3-1-1 records and requests and status updates and having that working knowledge at the meeting attendance, it'll close. It'll get closer, at least.
So, meeting directly with you every two weeks is very helpful to me. Like, again, and I'd like to continue, maybe not every other week, but maybe once a month, maybe, or whenever something arises. I just know that come, working with State Senator Fontana, it's mostly state money that's involved on Broadway Avenue. When that time comes, and we, we're working on those changes and things that we'd like to see that money put toward, I just really feel you need a, whether it's you or a designated person, a PR person there, really, to come to the neighborhood, because it gets very contentious when you talk about putting bike lanes and, you know, whatever the, the project might be. There's always some sort of, you know, adversity going on between the community and myself and with Domi. So as of now, and I'm, I will be holding this meeting probably in the next month or so, once we detail, and I'll meet with you first. I'll detail what we'd like to see done with the rest of that money, in agreement with the State Senator, of course. You know, he's completely on board. So once I come to those, when I present what we'd like to have done, do you and I meet and you have to okay it, or how's it going to work at that point?
So I think we have your list, right, of the initial things that we're looking into. And so we've got project staff that are looking at that and, and can work on designing it when we have that finalized.
Okay. And as far as like a community PR person, if we don't have one in place by then, it would have to be you, I think. I don't want to fill up your, your evenings, but, you know, I, I really need somebody from Domi to be like, this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to do it. I can't answer all those questions. I'm just trying to make, bless you. Okay, now that's it for me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
All that for an aye.
That takes us to Bill 1229.
Bill 1229, resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with WSP USA Inc. for costs associated with the Liberty Avenue HSIP project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,620,798.59, an increase of $1,036,336.17 from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve with brief discussion, please.
Second.
Question, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, are you here for this bill as well?
I am.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Appreciate your time. Being that I'm new to the Chair of the Public Works Committee, could you just give me a brief synopsis as to what UW, or WSP USA is and the reason that we're asking for the increase in allocation?
Absolutely. So WSP is our consultant who is managing this project. Even though this is written as an increase, it's actually the next phase of the project. So this is for final design and authorization for services during construction. So this isn't a project cost overrun or a change of scope at this point. This is just coming back to get authorization for them to move on to the next phase of the work. The Liberty Avenue HSIP project, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program, aims to improve safety for people driving cars, people riding bikes, and people walking in the Strip District. The project limits extend from 12th Street all the way to Heron Avenue and include a number of traffic signal improvements and a brand-new signal as well.
You just answered all my questions. You took the wind out of my sails. I had three other questions about it, the scope of the project and the actual length of Liberty Avenue that would be involved. So I'm good. Thank you very much, Director, for being here, and I'm happy to, to approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kraus?
Thank you, Director. I, I'll disqualify that a portion of that footprint is still technically Polish Hill. I think all the way down to 34th Street, so, and then even on the, I guess the opposite side would be Lawrenceville, too. So there's some, all the way to Heron takes you kind of over the neighborhood boundary. And I specifically had a question this morning from a constituent that I could not answer that is in this footprint, and I see planning is still in the audience, so I actually might wonder if they have any input, too. So the question is, is the giant construction project that is just before the railroad trestle that we call the Brewers Block, it's like 500 apartments, that's technically Polish Hill on the right side of Liberty Avenue there, the planning permit allowed them to build really, really close to the very small sidewalk. That is, it's probably like a three or four-foot sidewalk on Liberty Avenue. It's actually a fairly highly busy pedestrian area. You know, think about, like, you've got Port Authority bus stops, you've got the valet, which is kind of a, you know, has community classes, and there's just, you know, there is, there is some pedestrian traffic there. And so you've got kind of dangerous car driving, regardless of what the speed limit is on that part where you're just about to go under the railroad trestle, right before you hit Iron City Brewing. And there's a massive building on, you know, the sidewalk. But then this morning, and I haven't seen my eyes on it yet personally, but I'm told it looks like almost that they're taking over the sidewalk, or that the sidewalk is being extended into the street. I don't know if it's an infrastructure project. I don't know kind of what is going on on the sidewalk. And so if you don't know off the top of your head, can you find out for us? And I'll also send the same email. I literally got the question as, as of coming into chambers. I'm actually from one of the clerk staff, who's my constituent, who sees it every day. And I just didn't have the answer to that. And it really has been consternating to see how a 500 apartment union, you know, unit project, that we don't have our code structured in a way, I think, that gives us bigger sidewalks. Just, I'm just gonna say, I don't know a different way of saying that, right? That you're allowed to kind of build out right to the limit of maybe where the previous buildings were. So I don't know if it's their setbacks or grandfathered. I don't know the details on that one. I think the permitting kind of happened while we were still half in quarantine, and there wasn't a lot of community input. And so we shouldn't be doing that. And I've consistently said that, like, the entire time. The sidewalks are just too small in so many places in the district, especially where we're densifying. And I, I know I've got the zoning administrator here. I don't think we need to belabor this one. If you guys can follow up with me, I really appreciate that. But it's, you know, one detailed project with a question I can't answer that's not perfectly germane to the, the agenda item, Councilman Kraus. So I'll take my questions offline, but I would appreciate a follow-up on that one because I, it's, it's not just this one question. Everybody who sees that project is kind of like, god dang, man, how is this massive amount of apartment units towering over a very skinny pedestrian area right next to a dangerous roadway?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one preferred paper, Bill 592.
Bill 592, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code Article I, zoning districts in general Article II, based zoning district, Chapter 904, mixed-use districts, Article IV, planning districts, Chapter 908, public realm districts, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, Section 911.02, use table, and Section 911.04, use standards, Article VI, development standards, Chapter 914, parking, loading, and access, Chapter 915, environmental performance standards, and Chapter 19, signs, and Article VIII, review and enforcement, Chapter 922, development review procedures, and Article IX, Chapter 926, definitions to create three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Yeah.
Sir?
I'm going to defer to Councilperson Strasburger.
Thank you, Councilman. So, I, first of all, I'd like to call the members of Department of City Planning up to the table so that you're here for this discussion. I can make up the motion to amend by substitution, and then we can have a discussion there, if that makes sense to everybody.
I'm in agree, Councilman.
Okay. Just waiting to make sure the chair is in agreement. Mr. Chair, I was, I was saying I could make the motion to amend by substitution, then we can have the discussion if you're, okay. So, I will motion to amend Bill 2022-0592 to amend by substitution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended. There is, just for members' edification,
there's a summary in front of us. If you want to see the entire bill, it's 200 pages. It's right here. So, Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, you'll see there are 12, in the summary page, there are 12 amendments. 10 of them were voted on already in December and by this body. And at that point, we amended, and then we held. And now, we're approaching the drop deadline of March 5th, and so, we're really at the end of the process. There are two additional amendments that really have been added today, number 11 and 12. But let me just back up and say that the reason for holding the bill for three more months was to allow for an additional, on top of the two-year process that has discussed the Oakland Plan, not necessarily rezoning per se, but the Oakland Plan as a whole. There was a desire to have additional conversation with residents, Oakland stakeholders, institutions, to see if there could be even more, I would say, tweaks to the rezoning that wouldn't necessarily prompt it to go back to the Planning Commission. And after very robust conversation, meetings, a couple of different meetings, and then another follow-up conversation with those sitting here today from the Department of City Planning, we continue to work on answering all, I think, 67 questions and concerns that were brought to us during that process. Thank you to the Department of City Planning, and Kate Rieke, in particular, for your work on that. Those questions will be answered. Those concerns will be addressed in one way, shape, or form. A couple of them took the form of amendments today. But I really mostly wanted to thank everyone who's been part of the process, to thank City Planning for all you've done in this process, to thank my colleagues, Councilman Lavelle and Kraus, and your team, Melissa Rossiter for her assistance in the public engagement process, and to say that, in my opinion, this is not the end-all, be-all of what Oakland looks like and what zoning looks like in Oakland. There will be opportunity to, I hate to say continue the discussion, but that's what it is, to consider the elements that were not able to be addressed in this rezoning bill, but still, you know, we're still, people are still seeking answers, or, you know, their concerns to be addressed when it comes to balancing what a residential community looks like, that also has institutional partners, that also seeks to build attract development and to attract an innovation district. All of those are completely valid. And while I think a lot of them have been addressed in this bill, I do understand that some of them still are yet to be addressed. So, I will reserve my time for now. I might have other things to say based on what other questions people have, but wanted to open it up very, very generally to anyone here. If you would like to make any comments, if you'd rather just be here for questions that arise from my colleagues, that's also fine.
I think we're happy just to be able to respond to any questions.
Okay, then I'll stop for now.
Mr. Chair, from it?
Councilman Kraus?
Thank you very much. I don't want to, I don't know that I have anything that I could add to Councilwoman Strasburger's remarks, other than that I'm in alignment with her remarks. I would like to thank her and Councilman, yourself, Mr. Chair, publicly for the time invested to thoroughly vet community concerns across the board, regardless of who that may have been. And I would like to publicly recognize Councilwoman Strasburger for keeping us on track, keeping us centered and organized through, at times, a difficult process, but ultimately, I believe we've brought the best at this time that we can bring to the table, and that we remain open to further examination and further consideration of other topics that were brought up during the long discussion these last three months. So, thank you very much. I am in support today. We'll be voting in the affirmative, and would ask members that they would do so as well. So, thank you for the time for my remarks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that I think I hear everyone's exhaustion. So, that this is a public process that's been really fraught. I mean, it started off, right, I mean, it started off several years ago for the Oakland Plan, which I just, I think I heard Councilwoman Strasburger distinguishing from these zoning proposals. So, this isn't really the end of the Oakland planning, nor is it the fruition necessarily, it sounds like to me, right? I'm just telling you kind of like how I'm processing what I'm hearing. And I'm, we've definitely heard a lot of frustration in public comment, but that has also seemed to have just hit like a point of exhaustion. So, and sometimes you hear, you know, no one's happy. If no one's happy, you know, you found a good compromise. I'm not sure that that's where, what I am hearing. I just kind of hear people just like exhausted, which doesn't necessarily mean that they're kind of like ready to finish compromising. So, I do want some clarifications, because we just got, I feel like we just got this this morning, as councilmembers, right? And so, I've been trying to both pay attention to the agenda as we've been voting, but also reading. It is a very long document. It's on a PDF on my tiny telephone screen. And then, similarly, the maps, there's a map attached. So, I do, I will ask you just some factual questions that you can answer and not other lofty questions. So, we heard a lot about extending all of Oakland, which is five neighborhoods, five pieces, or it's four pieces, into the inclusionary zoning overlay. This map does not include the entirety of Oakland that is subject to this zoning changes. The legislation doesn't apply to all, every square inch of Oakland by any means, right? Or it does? Even from the original zoning?
Yeah, I apologize. That map is just the changes that came out yesterday. The inclusionary zoning is still included as part of the overall legislative package.
Okay, thank you. So, in that giant pile that's over there at the clerk's desk and out in front of me, there is the addition of every part of Oakland to inclusionary zoning in this legislation, in the original legislative amendment?
Yeah, the inclusionary, the IZO, the inclusionary zoning overlay and the application of it has not changed through what was initially submitted to City Council. And so, that is for the entirety of the four Oakland neighborhoods, excluding the EMI, the Educational, Medical, Institutional Districts, because those are all governed by institutional master plans. And so, that's where those, you know, those areas were, are the only exclusions in the Oakland neighborhood to the IZO, the inclusionary zoning overlay.
Then I'm confused about the UCE, because that also looks exempted to me, because it says that if 50% of the building has residential units, and only if then, does the inclusionary zoning overlay apply. Is that in our regular IZ overlay, or no? Our regular IZ overlay, it's like, if you have 20 units, then IZ kicks in, and you need to include two at a lower rent. What I'm reading here is different for the UCE, which is dark purple on the amendment map.
No, the restriction in the UCE is that no more than half of the building can be used for residential uses, period. So, you know, the intention there was to make sure that, you know, this is intended to be an employment district, you know, here in the Innovation District in Oakland, but also potentially to be in other places, and that, you know, with that, we wanted to be able to make sure, and one of the issues that came up through the Oakland Plan process was that there were large parcels on the Fifth and Forbes corridor that were being used for entirely residential buildings. And that was allowing for less space to be potentially used for innovation uses, for office uses, for research uses, for the spinoffs from the university. And we really wanted to make sure to preserve space in that employment district for employment uses, while also allowing for some mixed-use buildings that would allow for residential uses as well. And we did, there was an additional carve-out there that, you know, if a, you know, if a building isn't, you know, if something is entirely, you know, affordable housing, that it would also be permitted in the district. So, it's, less than half of the buildings are, you know, are allowed to be residential. That portion of a building that may be residential would be subject to the inclusionary zoning overlay district, because it is, it does apply there. But that completely affordable projects would be the only way that, you know, that anyone would be able to have more than half of the building be used for residential.
So, I really did misunderstand that. So, when you say this district is intended to be an employment district, and that there was the observation that some of the buildings were entirely residential use, and that that was, would somehow change, are you talking about all of Oakland, all of this map, or just the UCE?
The UCE. So, the intention of the UCE is to be an employment district, really, to allow for, like I said, those innovation, those offices, those research-type uses. The UCMU is a mixed-use zone, you know, by its nature, so it does allow for, you know, a lot of those types of uses, but also for greater residential use in that district. And then, the RMU does allow for some, like, neighborhood commercial-type uses, but the primary use, the primary uses in that district are residential. And so, the intention is that, you know, as, kind of in following with the land use strategy that came out of the neighborhood plan, that, you know, that each one of those districts would have, you know, would have somewhat of a focus, although there would be an allowance for a mix of uses in each of the districts to some degree.
So, I've written down in front of me, I've already forgotten, that UCE reduces residential uses from existing conditions.
That's correct, in that, you know...
So, you said that. And then, UCMU increases possibly residential uses. Is that's because it allows greater height, I think?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the RMU, you were like, it's kind of like in-between.
Well, the RMU, the primary use is residential uses. The RMU is being proposed to be applied in central, primarily in central Oakland. And, you know, there are some small-scale commercial uses in that area currently. I think we wanted to continue to be able to permit that. However, what we wanted to do was allow through the Performance Point System that if there were community benefits being provided, that we allowed for additional density in that district than we presently do, to allow for more residential housing in central Oakland, in that area of central Oakland, you know, which, you know, which was, which was also noted as a need in the Oakland Plan. You know, there was, you know, a lot of discussion through the planning process of not only the need for additional space for innovation uses and those types of things, but also more opportunities for residential to have, whether it be students, whether it be employees of, you know, the institutions, you know, or others, to be able to live in, you know, to have residential opportunities and, you know, and opportunities to live in Oakland as well.
I'm going to stop you there. So, I heard in public testimony in these discussions, and again, not all of councils are involved, as the councilmembers who represent these neighborhoods. And so, with all respect to those who have sat through many, many, many more hours of this than I have, but we heard a lot of testimony about how we really needed these zoning amendments, because it was going to increase residential density. And I questioned that, and I still don't really have data that proves to me that this will, even though there is height, greater height allowed, as you said, in the UCMU part, which is not bigger than the UCE part of this map, the UCE reduces residential uses and may eliminate housing. I said, I pulled up census tract data that shows that it's actually incredibly highly densely populated already because of the historical lack of zoning that required cars, mostly, right? And so, even though the heights of the buildings were very low, there's a de facto existing extremely high residential density along some of these census tracts. Now, like, something like 15,000 people per square mile, which is, you know, three times the average residential density in the city, which is about 5,000 people. So, that I do still have deep concerns that even though we, you know, people say like, well, you'll have higher height allowances, you can build higher so that will automatically densify. That's not necessarily true. And certainly, the demolition of some of our historic districts where people are really packed in, in smaller units, and without car allowances, without the turning radiuses for the driveways for the cars, without the, all those kinds of things, I really think we're at risk of de-densifying. And then, the dark purple area, which is UCE, is meant to de-densify residential uses. It just seems really the opposite of what we heard as arguments for the zoning. And so, this amendment in front of us today, and again, I'm just, you know, I'm just reading it. You said that the UCE, I think you said the original legislation allowed it to go down to 50%, but in fact, today's amendment allows it to go down to 20%. Because, I don't know, number 11 says, increase the educational classroom space permitted in a structure to 80% in the UCE. Is that what, is that what the language we just voted to amend does?
So, it doesn't change the, it doesn't change the requirement relative to residential. Residential can be up to 50% of a structure in the UCE district. You know, the change...
Oh, I see. I thought it was like a minimum. You're saying it's a maximum.
Yeah, the change, the change in, you know, the change that was, that was offered in the bill that, you know, council, the amendment that council voted on was increasing the allowance of classroom space, educational classroom spaces, sorry, the name of the use, up to 80%. So, it allows for a building that, if desired, could allow for more classroom space than was initially permitted, permitted staff, I think that was 50% in previously.
It just strikes me as ironic, right? We're talking about, we just voted to make it easier to flip office uses back to residential downtown. And that this Oakland Plan is going, in my estimation, from what I can understand, is really going to be increasing office uses throughout Oakland, outside of the EMI. Like, these, this map in front of me is not the Educational, Medical, Institutional Master Plan footprint. And so, it seems like if it is your campus, then it should just be in the EMI, and we have a separate process for that. And I know that now I'm kind of upsetting the whole apple cart and going back to issues that are kind of, you're well past, as the people who have been closest to the conversation. But I do hope that... to the conversation. But I do hope that we do continue the conversation. Again, as I, as I think I heard Councilwoman Strasburger allude to, that this, even though there is a point of exhaustion here, even though what I'm also hearing is that if we do make more changes, we really do have to reset this process and go back to planning commission. And so basically, everybody's exhausted. These are tweaks that can be made to pass this zoning bill without going back to planning commission. And so everybody's just kind of like, yeah, all right, fine, let's do it. But that, there probably will be more changes in the future.
And I would just quickly note that, I mean, presently on Forbes Avenue, for example, which is part of the UCE, the, the current maximum height in the district is 85 feet. And so even allowing, and, and with what's being proposed, we're actually, you know, that's, that's moving up to a potential of 210 feet. So it is allowing for an increase of density, even if there is, there are restrictions on residential.
You could double, almost double the height of the building, or double the height, did you say?
You can, and, and city council...
But then you could reduce the residential use to 20%.
50%.
That's the maximum. You could have 80% of the building, even if you doubled the height, be classroom.
Well, you could have, you could have...
You could have a double height building, but with only 20% of the double height building being residential.
It's not a requirement that the building is 80% classroom space.
But you're allowing it.
So the maximum height is more than double what the prior, or the current zoning's maximum height is. So at 50% of the building residential, it's still more than, at 220 feet.
But that's the maximum.
Yes.
Right, so that's...
So you don't, if I'm, if it's my building, I don't have to put 50% residential.
That's correct. There is no, there is no zoning that compels people to put whatever a use.
Can I do zero residential?
Both presently and in with what's being proposed, yes.
All right.
My only other comment was that, you know, with the city council, it also, in the December amendments in the UCE, you know, done a full reduction of parking in the district as well, for your question of, you know, does height equal density and, you know, especially related to parking requirements.
Remind me of that part, because I didn't see the changes here. Can you?
It's, it's number five in the, it's number five in the sheet, you know, that, that lists all of the summary of changes.
914.04, off-street parking exemption reduction areas to change UCE to a 100% reduction. So that's like downtown. So again, you could build basically a downtown office tower, just like you can downtown. This change would allow that on Forbes, or Boulevard of the Allies, on the southerly side.
Not Boulevard of the Allies, but in the Fifth and Forbes corridor.
I thought they were the same color, purple.
Yeah, there, there's a, the UCE is on...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The UCE is on the southerly side of Boulevard of the Allies. All the way down, yeah, just a little bit there. So between Howt, between, I can't read that, it's too small. What is this, what is the street? Is that Howt there, or this kind of straight edge? And I guess, you know, on smaller things, we wouldn't be as persnickety, but like, knowing where...
Is it Craft Avenue?
Maybe it's Craft. I can't really read it. This is like a separate...
Craft.
Councilwoman Kueh has the map, that same map shown.
South of, okay, southwest of Craft Avenue. So I under, you know, I think everybody has just discomfort here. It's also what I'm kind of feeling. So I guess, you know what, I think I, I don't really have any questions that you can answer here. So I'll just, I'll stop and see if anyone else has any questions. Mr. Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam President.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Councilwoman Warwick.
Can I just add?
I just really want to just add that when we're talking about universities, you're not just talking about Pitt, you're talking about Carlo and, and any other universities in Oakland.
Carnegie Mellon, you know, is, is within, or, you know, Carnegie Mellon is partially within Oakland.
That's what I thought, okay.
And the UPMC campus, UPMC campus is also there.
Okay. So there's a lot of stuff happening there. Okay. And I just want to say, and without those places, we won't have a lot of employment for our own, own areas. So, I mean, there's, there's got to be a balance here, I think. And I think councilwoman's really trying to strike that balance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, just because there was a speaker at the beginning, I don't know if you heard, it was Andrea Boykowitz from OPDC, right? She made a statement about the item 11. And just, just to reiterate that, that, my understanding anyway, again, is the concern of sort of the universities just taking over, right? Taking over the neighborhood more so than, than they already have. I think that's a valid concern, you know, for residential area. And also keeping in mind, not to sort of plug my district, but we have a, a big huge space just waiting to be developed, right? We would really like to see something happen over at the Hazelwood Green. So again, I don't, not insert myself in some work that's been going on for so long, but it's, it seems like a valid concern that she raises. And I don't know if it's possible to take that line item out, but I know that that's, that was at least what, what is, what is being requested there. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Any other members first round? If not, second round, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. So I'd like to address a little bit of what I heard. One, if you heard exhaustion, it's, it's true, because I think we're at the point where we've been working for a long time and, you know, hearing still, yet, you know, feeling like this has gone through a whole process and still, hearing the discontent in some, from some people who are stakeholders. And yet, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I am fully, wholeheartedly in support of this plan and this rezoning. I think there are, it's really difficult to try to create a plan that is really, you know, meant to be for one neighborhood, but really is for separate distinct neighborhoods with, that is essentially a downtown as well, the third largest downtown in Pennsylvania. So there are many, many things to balance. Do I think that this is going to be the end of, you know, the, the last time to discuss a plan or the zoning of Oakland? By all means, no. In fact, I think that there are elements of this we can revisit sooner rather than later, as I see my city planning friends cringe. But I, I, there are elements of this that are, that I particularly support, inclusionary zoning, the reduction, the 100% reduction of parking. So, you know, elimination of parking minimums, which is something that I'd like to see in more neighborhoods across the, across the city where it makes sense to do so. We need to be prioritizing other modes of transportation in these areas aside from cars. So that is one way to, to really do that and make that happen. Very proud of that. And I think that when you see the, the portions of Oakland that look like they're less dense for residential, you see step downs certainly from the, the much denser areas that might be geared more towards an innovation district, a business district, towards the residential areas. You still see the potential for much more dense residential areas. I mean, 40 feet base, 95 feet max height in some of these areas, 185 max height, or 65 foot base height. Those, that's much denser than what we see in central and south Oakland currently, where we have dangerous kind of two-story buildings, three-story buildings, that are houses converted into, you know, barely habitable areas that mostly students live in. Like, we, we all acknowledge that that has to change. And one way to do that is to allow for greater density in, in those areas as well. I'll say that in some of these conversations, we've had really almost philosophical conversations about what is, what is the definition of a residential community. And to some people, a residential community is single-family housing. And to some people, they can envision a residential, a very vibrant, a very cohesive community where, where people live in denser buildings, where people live in higher buildings. And that still is possible to feel like a community and also, you know, have, have density there. So, but I also, there's a sort of, kind of one step in front of the other approach here. We can't, I don't think if we were to say, "Let's turn all of Oakland into a max height of 210 feet or 400 feet," that, that would be, that would bring a lot of comfort to the existing residents either. Who knows? Maybe 50 years from now, that's where people want to go in Oakland, but I don't think we're there yet. So I really do think this strikes the balance. It's responsible, it's a responsible balance between what those who want to see greater, you know, an innovation district, and those who are longstanding residents, allowing for, you know, height step downs from the sort of downtown portion to the more residential portion. And I also want to say, like, no one zoning bill, just like no one development, can solve every problem in Oakland. A lot of what we're continuing to hear is, "We want more investment in affordable housing." There, this is one tool, but there's many other tools that we have to continue to keep the, our eye on and to push forward as quickly as possible. People want, some people want grocery stores. People want, you know, more, more, the universities to house more of their students closer to campus or on campus. People want safe streets to walk on and a pleasant pedestrian experience. People want a community center. Like, those are all things that this won't totally solve for. We have to continue to work outside of this plan as well. So wholeheartedly support this plan, and I'm happy to, to vote on it today.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to speak as somebody who was actually born and raised in Oakland, on Fifth Avenue in Oakland. And I really wanted to go back to the day when I lived on Fifth Avenue and there's student housing there now. But when I was growing up, around the bend, before it was Lamar, before it was outdoor advertising, it was a chicken farm. So I would love for it to go back to those days, but I don't think we're going to see those. So I, I want to say that I do think that there's, although I think a lot of people still like to see that now. But, but I, I just want to say that I think that there's, this is such a difficult, difficult area. And I, and I, I love Oakland. And, you know, I tried to get it in my district when we redistricted. I'm like, take, take me across the bridge, take me over that way. I'm not going to pretend it. But it is difficult. And I think that you've done a great job trying to bring everyone's together and all the opinions. And, but I also don't want to, I want to make sure that we understand that, you know, Car, Carlo universities and this mix, and they contribute a lot also to the Oakland and the Hill District area. And, and I don't want to, I don't want to forget that they, that they have a lot to offer. But I also don't want to say that our universities and others don't contribute so much. Unlike other people, I really do value and see what they, they bring to the table for the city of Pittsburgh. And I can't imagine Pittsburgh without them. That doesn't mean I don't think that I want them to do more. And that doesn't mean I don't want them to do better. That just means I do see that they do bring a lot to the table. But I would love for the conversation to include how they can be, Pitt and the universities can be part of the housing solutions in the city of Pittsburgh. I think that would be a conversation worth having. And, and I would even give more property if that, if they were part of that solution. I would be happy to do something like that. And then I also, like Councilwoman Warwick, want them to look at other parts of the city of Pittsburgh that are also, you know, worthy of investing. And I think that, you know, we have a lot of areas and a lot of space across Pittsburgh, and it's not saturating one area. So we'd like for them to consider looking into our areas as well. With that said, I just, I'm going to be supportive today, and I want to thank the councilwoman and the three representatives of Oakland for coming together, working together, and doing such a good job, and trying to come to some compromise. It's difficult. And I, and I will say, I know and appreciate it. But as a person who was born and raised in Oakland, I would love for it to be what it was. I can see it's never going to be what it was, but I think it could be a, a great future, working together. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would note, especially when you talked about, you know, kind of the institutions and their role in housing, you know, your, your idea there was one that was definitely echoed by residents through the planning process and is a recommendation, not a zoning recommendation per se, but a recommendation otherwise for us to work towards, you know, in the plan. And so that was something that was captured in the plan and something that, you know, that we'll be working with institutions on in the future. So...
That is great. I'm glad to hear that. And I, I'm going to thank, thank all of you and thank the universities for, for that conversation. And I can't wait to hear what comes from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I just want to thank, one, thank you all, because you all have been working on this for a very long time. I also want to thank Councilman Kraus, but especially I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for working very, very hard and tirelessly over the last few months to create what is probably the best balance possible to service all the various interests and needs of the Oakland community. So thank you, Councilwoman. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will move us to the Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 1230.
Bill 1230, Resolution Authorizing the Office of the Mayor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with Sister Cities Association of Pittsburgh as a Single Source Provider to Manage the City of Pittsburgh's Relationships and Programming with Its Sister Cities and Develop New Partnerships with Cities Throughout the World at a Cost Not to Exceed $25,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1231.
Bill 1231, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Carnegie Mellon University Robotics Innovation Center Project, lots 33, 37, and 42.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1232.
Bill 1232, Resolution Approving Execution of a deed by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh to convey parcel B in the Henderson subdivision plan, a to-be-filled subdivision of Block 92H, Lot 120, 264 Glass Run Road, Hays, in the 31st Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Hays Woods, Council District 5.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just brief, just to clarify, since it is Hays Woods, this is a house, they have a bridge, they have a driveway bridge that goes over a creek. The bridge is theirs, but they can't afford to repair. It's just, I mean, it's awful. So they are giving a piece of their land in exchange for access through a bit of Hays Woods. So that's, just to clarify, it's a very small piece of park, and that's what it's for.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1233.
Bill 1233, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sell of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation for the Sell of Block 27B, Lots 53 and 54, in the Fifth Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, and lastly, Bill 1234.
Bill 1234, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sell of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Studio Volley LLC or a Related Entity for the Sell of Block 10K, Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and Block 10P, Lots 125, 121, 5, 122, 124, 125, 126, 127, and 128, in the Fifth Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 2:00 PM, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion with the LGBTQIA+ Commission. Next week, council will hold our Regular Understanding Committee meetings on Tuesday, February 28th, and Wednesday, March 1st at, at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. And we also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything else from members? If not, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.